Okay, let's call to order the regular business meeting of the Board of Education for Monday, April 23rd. If I could ask everybody to please stand and recite their pledge of allegiance.
...to the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, and every being and every being.
Members of the D-128 School Board and Administration are seated at a U-shaped conference table.
All right, roll call, please.
Jim Batson.
Here.
Pat Roos.
Here.
Kevin Huber. Scott Moose.
Here.
Aaron McLeod.
Here.
Here. Okay, so we note, Kevin is... Oh, I'm passing. All right, so our agenda, we will open it up for public comment and ask anybody from the public who wishing to speak, please limit your comments to three minutes. We have some student recognition tonight, we'll review the memory project, we'll have a brief president's report, then updates from the student school board reps, we will have the superintendent's report, we'll vote on the consent vote agenda, and there is one change on the consent vote agenda, item 3J2A. 3J2A. So Alex Gil, mathematics teacher, is at VHHS, not LHS. All right, so when we get to that, we'll ask for a motion to approve the consent vote agenda as amended. Then we have updates from program and personnel, facilities and finance. This guy, I don't believe there's any property. No, there is not. Okay, and is there anything from seat altering?
No, there is none.
Okay. Jimmy, from IASB?
No.
Okay, and then we will have an executive session tonight. We have three matters this evening, one employment of an employee, five ILCS 120/2C1, two collective negotiating matters, five ILCS 120/2C2, and then three selection of a person to fill a vacancy of the school board, five ILCS 120/2C3, and then we will take action on item 9A following that session. All right? All right, so let me open up to anybody from the public who wants to speak.
Anna Dre steps to the podium.
Good afternoon, Board. Is this on?
Talk again, Anna.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
All right, guys. So Anna Dre, 10:20, Ashley Lane, I'm a Libertyville High School parent for five more weeks or so, but who's counting? So I'd like to talk to you guys about a proposed change at Libertyville High School in the POS program. That is an incredibly valuable program. You've got kids of all different abilities and every different, in many different places at the high school. You've got kids with special needs who have IEPs, they're very, very well-covered. You've got your super high-flyer kids, they're well-covered. Then you've got these kids who kind of fall in between, they need extra help for a wide variety of reasons. They don't get the cookie cutter role for some reason. My son happens to be one of those kids, and he's in POS this year as a senior, I wish he'd been in all year because it's been very, very successful. He's doing AP level work and he's doing well because of the assistance that he's receiving from a truly gifted teacher in there, Laura Akers. It's come to my attention that Ms. Akers is being reassigned in the building to another position, and that she didn't ask for the change, but that a current LST lead, Sean Farrell, has apparently asked for the change. And I'm assuming, although Rita Fisher and I had a talk, but with, you know, divulging any personnel issues, the only thing I can assume is he's a more senior instructor, so he got to take that position. And I'd like y'all to really, really question that. You have on your agenda tonight personnel changes at both schools. I don't see this one on here, I don't know if it's already been voted on, but if it does come before you guys... Laura's doing a phenomenal job. She's got these kids, she's their advocate until they're ready to advocate for themselves sometimes with difficult teachers. My son's got an AP Calc teacher who has not had time to work with him this year. You guys, I talked to you about that. He's too busy with his extracurricular activities to be able to work with his AP Calc children. So she has, in some ways, filled that gap in many important ways. When you bring a new teacher in there, no matter how phenomenal they are, there's going to be a learning curve. You've got sophomores, freshmen, sink juniors, who they're going, she's going to have to get up to speed, there's going to be a gap, she or he, in this case, he. I just, I wonder, is this decision in the best interest of those students? What will they benefit from this change happening? And will this put an already at-risk group of kids at further at risk? And I feel like it will. Sean is a well-respected educator in this community. I can only speak from my experience. I used to run window painting, and when I was out on the streets in Libertyville, we were painting a bunch of windows, had 560 kids out there with paint and a bunch of historic buildings. You can begin to imagine how nerve-wracking that is. So we come up with some very clear rules. Do this, don't do that. We make sure every group has an adult with them, we give the kids the rules, and then we tell the adult, you're responsible for these rules. Well, ace, the athletes committed to excellence were painting Shakuh, and they were splatter painting, which is against rule number one, which is bold, and it's our biggest one, you shouldn't break, just dipping and slinging paint everywhere. It was like a gun show. And I walked up and I was like, stop, please stop, because if we abuse these businesses, they're not going to be able to do it again. And I'm like, guys, did you read the rules? And they all said, no. And Sean was their adult, and I said, Sean, where are the rules? They were in his pocket. I said, please go over, please have the students go over these rules, and please, see that they adhere to it. And Sean proceeded to tell me that I shouldn't be so strident with him, that these were good kids, his group. And I said, Sean, I want you to look up and down this street, there's 560 children on this street, and every last one of them is a good kid. Because you know if you're going to say one group's good, what's the other group? That really hit me wrong, and it didn't show any sensitivity whatsoever, one, respect to the program, and to show any sensitivity to the other kids on the streets. My other concern as a taxpayer is the current teacher in that role makes $98,000, Mr. Farrell's current income is $139. I'm sure it will be adjusted somewhat when it goes into POS, but you have got an extremely successful teacher making under $100,000, and you're getting ready to pay them at least, I would assume, $30,000 more? Is that a good use of our tax dollars? I'm going to argue no. I would really like you guys to look into this, and I'd like y'all to do what's in the bestest interest of these children. Principal Koulentis is already famous in our community for saying, every child matters. What is then the best interest of our students in this decision? And it is to keep the remaining teacher there. The other thing I wanted to leave you guys with, the process that you've used for searching for the Board, I want to commend you. I think you have used a phenomenal process this time. It was all over the place. Anybody who was interested, had an opportunity to apply, I think you got a lot of applications, and I think that's great. I just, I think y'all have done a real good job on that. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Big crowd on this one. Okay, let's move on to our student recognition.
VHHS Principal Dr. John Gilliam steps to the podium.
Good evening, I'm John Gilliam, Principal of Vernon Hills High School. Excited this evening to recognize a bunch of our kids. I'm not going to have the opportunity to introduce Allison Malloy and her artist, so I publicly just want to say thanks and congratulations to you guys before we see this memory project. But before we get there, I do want to bring up our FBLA, Future Business Leaders of America. I have said, I've been on record before, that there are a couple really healthy programs in our building. One of them, we saw earlier this fall, that's our girls' cross-country team, healthy in the sense of participation and success, just energy around the program. And the other one is this one here tonight. Our FBLA program continues to shine, continues to show just a tremendous amount of success, and much of it is due to its leadership. So tonight here is Tony Isabella, Lynn Benson, and Diane Phillips. Diane Phillips, come on up. She is the sponsor of this activity, this competitive club, and before I turn the mic over to her, I do want to say that it's worth noting that in the last few weeks, she has been given an award of herself. And the IDSA Group, which is the organization that our student activity directors are a part of, named her Club Advisor of the Year. So congratulations to Diane.
John and Diane shake hands.
...now I'm going to turn it over to her to introduce these great kids.
Hey, John, since we're on that, that's part of recognition tonight, so if you don't mind, let me just read a little bit more about Diane, and since she's already up there and it's hard to get her up to the microphone because she's so humble, to start one. Director of 128, Director of Community Education in Grants, Diane Phillips, was honored by the Illinois Directors of Student Activities as a recipient of a Distinguished Service Recognition Award. The award recognizes individuals who have made lifetime contributions impacting student activity programs. Diane received the honor at the annual IDSA Awards banquet and convention, held at the Donald E. Stevens Convention Center in Rosemont. She was nominated for this honor by VHHS Student Activities Director Deborah Beagle, LHS Student Activities Director Jennifer Ulix, and VHHS Principal John Gilliam. Again, Diane, congratulations on this well-deserved honor, so...
Diane Phillips steps to the podium.
All right. Can you hear me?
Yeah.
All right. I want Lynn and Tony to come up. I appreciate the recognition for me, but we are all in this together for Future Business Leaders of America, for Vernon Hills. And we had, we had 79 competitors at the Future Business Leaders of America 69th State Competition in Springfield, April 6th and 7th, and at the competition, there's about 1,400 competitors that are there, so Libertyville and Vernon Hills both shined there. There were over 66 Illinois chapters, there's 12 new chapters, so FBLA is growing in the state of Illinois, which is so cool, because it's a great organization. The theme this year is called Elevate Your Future, and I know that all of our kids did that and continue to shine, and tonight we're recognizing those students that finished in the top four in their event at state. I said that we had 79 competitors, they competed in 46 different events, which is awesome. I think it's the most that we've competed in for variety. We had 31 national qualifiers, and Vernon Hills, as John said, continues to grow. We were recognized as the fifth-largest chapter in the state of Illinois with 112 members, so we have continued to grow over the five years that we've been working together for this great club. Lynn was recognized for her first year as an advisor, Tony was recognized two years for that, and I was recognized for my fifth year as the advisor for Vernon Hills. And what I'm going to do is I'm going to ask the students to come up and to elevate their future, I'm going to have them say loudly what their name is, and what event, and how they finished. So FBLA, come on up. Come on. All right, so stand over.
VHHS FBLA students gather in front of the podium.
All right, so I want you to start and remember, name your event and how you placed, loud.
Hi, I'm Vivian Chai.
I'm Raisa Ramani.
And we placed third in digital broadcasting, broadcasting journalism.
Hi, I'm Madeline Woodrow. I competed in digital video production with my group, who's not here today, but we got second place.
Hi, I'm Rachel Chung.
And I'm Sarah Weisblatt.
And we both placed second in hospital management.
Hi, I'm Sebastian Dominich, and I placed third in sales presentation.
Hi, I'm Gina Liu, and my teammates and I placed second in e-business.
Hello, my name is Eric Song, and I placed first in intro to business communication.
Hello, my name is Daniel Zorn, and I placed first in cybersecurity.
Hi, my name is Vanna Gorashenko, and I competed in business plan with my partners, Sujean Rohed, who were not able to make it today, and we got third.
Hi, my name's Sohan, and we, my group and I competed in parliamentary procedure, and we ended up placing third at state.
Hi, I'm Neil Chathery, and I competed in mobile application development, and I got third place.
Hi, I'm Thomas Florian, and I placed fourth in help desk.
Diane Phillips returns to the podium.
So as you can see, some of the topics aren't all business-related, cybersecurity, I mean, but it is definitely a way that everyone can learn to be a business leader in their future, and we are so proud of these young people, and we look forward, we're going to nationals in Baltimore, June 27th through July 2nd, so wish us well, and you're going to read about us in the paper.
So, how many total students are you taking to national?
I'm taking 21. We had 31 placed, but due to some conflicts, we have 21 that will be competing at state. And we had some people that I went, I'm glad, they just finished a tennis match, so they're going to introduce themselves. So we're talking about your name, and the event, and where you placed, please.
So I'm Sujean Velody, and I participate in the business plan event, and placed third.
And I'm Rohed J. Kelly, also participate in business plan, and we also placed second.
I'm Monal Pran, I participated in the vote, or, sorry.
Organization.
Management Information Systems. I did another event, sorry, a couple years ago. I placed first.
Superintendent Dr. Prentice Lee, Pat Grudy, School Board President, and Principal John Gilliam shake hands with the FBLA students and their advisors, Diane Phillips, Tony Isabella, and Lynn Benson.
Congratulations, congratulations, and congratulations. Okay, so what we want to do now is kind of scoot together and sponsors, okay, so everybody kind of scoot together, so make sure we can see your face, so as always, short people to the front, tall people to the back. Parents, if you'd like to come around and take a picture of the group, you can certainly do that. Okay, so yeah, make sure you're in place so they can see your face, okay?
All right. Boy, I feel hot.
FBLA students gather for a picture with Superintendent Lee, Board President Grudy, and Principal Gilliam. The students' parents gather to take pictures.
All right, congratulations. Okay. So if you guys will just hang around for a couple minutes, we've got a little bit more student recognition to do, and then we'll say our, we'll bid you adieu, okay?
Dr. Tom Koulentis, LHS Principal, steps to the podium.
Well, good evening, I'm Tom Koulentis, the very proud principal of Libertyville High School, and we have our Future Business Leaders of America, who have also done an extraordinary job and qualified for the national competition. We don't have quite as many as Vernon Hills does, but we are equally proud of our competitors as well. And so, is Sophie here, Sophie Wetluffer? Come on up.
Sophie Wetluffer joins Dr. Koulentis at the podium.
So Sophie and her partner Conrad placed third in the Business Financial Plan Competition, and Sophie, Mr. Stanley back there is our district financial manager, and he has to come up with a financial plan for our district, so maybe you should talk. So, yes, congratulations. And you, Maggie, you can. Okay, and your mom would like to come and take a picture. Oh, you're dead? Okay. Good job. Uh, Superintendent, Dr. Grudy, Board President.
Sophie shakes hands and takes pictures with Dr. Koulentis, Dr. Lee, and Board President Grudy.
Oop, one more. Now, we have one more student from Libertyville High School that we are going to honor for a different award tonight. Are we ready to do that one with the setup with the video and everything? Ms. Tadrick? Mr. Kelly? Mr. ... Check in, check in. All right, well, I'll start talking, because we are extraordinarily proud of this young man. Is Peter here? Peter Dankelson? Come on up, Peter. All right, so Peter's had quite a year, among many, many great talents and accomplishments, he has won the Prudential Spirit of Community Award, and I'm going to read a little bit of the proclamation that was sent to me. It says, "Congratulations, Peter, the judges for the 2018 Prudential Spirit of Community Awards have conferred a certificate of excellence upon you. This signifies that Peter was among the top 10% of all applicants from the state in this year's program." And what happens is, schools, for every thousand students they have, are allowed to only send one student forward. And so for all the schools in the state of Illinois, Peter was among the top 10% of applicants. Based on the number of volunteer hours indicated in his application, Peter has also qualified for the President's Volunteer Service Award. This award recognizes Americans of all ages who have volunteered significant amounts of their time to serve their communities and their country. So Peter is receiving the Prudential Spirit of Community Award for all of his volunteer service work that he has done throughout not only the state, but actually the country, and I think we're actually, have you gone international yet?
Not quite.
Maybe not yet, it's just a matter of time, it's just a matter of time. So I'm going to give Peter this award, and we have a very short, two-minute video that kind of shows what Peter has been doing and the work that he's done, and it's great, because every month, Peter and his mom send me his schedule, and he is like more booked than Brad Pitt and Johnny Depp. This guy's calendar, I don't know how you keep everything balanced, and you're a great student on top of it, so congratulations. Picture before the video?
Yeah, let's draw a picture. Hi, Peter, good to see you. How are you? Yes?
Peter shakes hands and takes pictures with Dr. Koulentis, Dr. Lee, and Board President A video about Peter Dankelson plays.
It's a Fisher story, but it'd be too much for me to, in some way. It is a good snapshot of how hard school can be, especially for kids who are different.
I think CCA is making an important impact that we never could imagine through our work and life. It's about people with any difference in this world, and it's about teaching a generation that it's time to make an impact.
So I think it's really one of the students that I talk to, that there is a book, and the direction will be, I can come in, and I bring the story to life.
Students cheering. Students examine something.
Really excited that such an awesome book and such an awesome film has made the big impact that it has.
Poster, be who you want to be, not what others want to see.
When they see Peter, and they, you know, they start out asking questions about, how do you handle bullying? How do you handle staring? And then you see through the assemblies, the questions of, you know, what do you play on Xbox? What are your hobbies? What's your favorite sports team? And they just learned to see past someone's differences without really even understanding what they did. They just want to be a student.
A video montage of Peter and his mom speaking at schools.
We discuss the book, we meet the book, and the kids doing projects, but to hear it from Peter, somebody that lives through all the things that they read about, really brings it home for them, and really makes them able to transfer that knowledge and information into real life.
So the very thing that I want students to take away, I want them to feel comfortable with who they are. So I hope that students can hear my story, and then they're more aware, and then they realize that they don't have to pretend to be something they're not, they can be who they want to be.
Text on screen, kind words do not cost much, yet they accomplish much. Blaise Pascal. A video montage of Peter and his mom speaking at schools. Text on screen, show the world you choose kind. A video montage of Peter and his mom speaking at schools.
He's changing the world. One school will die, and one get it die.
Video of students forming a heart in a parking lot. Text on screen, choose kind. To book a speaker for your school, contact us at ccaids.org.
On top of his, on top of his many talents, I think it's important to know that Peter is an excellent guitar player, and this Thursday, we have our Best Buddies Talent Show at Libertyville High School, and you can come out and watch him shred that guitar.
Okay, so before we go this evening, my name is Prentice Lee, and I'm proud to be the superintendent at this wonderful district, because we have these phenomenal students and a phenomenal staff to work with them. So we want to welcome you tonight, and normally what we say at this time is, we're really looking forward to having you stay for the rest of the board meeting. Okay? That was a joke, you can laugh. In a minute, well, if you would like to, we'll let you exit stage right over here. But what I want to tell you on behalf of the Board, the district administration, and both John and Tom's administrators and staff at the building, this is our favorite thing to do, to recognize kids for success at any level, this is what drives us here. But we know, as wonderful as these students are, they have had wonderful support at home, and with extended families, and with neighborhoods. So what we want to do at this point is, we want to ask all the parents and family members, and maybe family friends that are here tonight, to stand up and let us recognize you for everything that you've done with them. We very much appreciate, you know, what you do with your children and how you support them, in getting them ready for this great high school experience, and we couldn't do it without you, so thank you very much. So, at this point, if you would like to leave and not stay for the rest of the board meeting, you can certainly do that without any judgment on our part, okay? Thank you again, nice to see you.
Most of the audience leaves as the camera pans back to the school board. Dr. Rena Fisher goes to the podium.
I am very pleased at this time to introduce our educational presentation for tonight, Allison Malloy. Our teacher at Vernon Hills High School is here with students who participated in the very unique memory project that they've been recognized for.
Allison Malloy steps to the podium.
Can I be heard? Okay, wonderful. Good evening, everyone, Board, students, everyone who decided to stay. I was invited by Rita to speak tonight about a project that I've been working with students for three years on, called the Memory Project. It actually is based in Middleton, Wisconsin, not too far from here, and it's been going since 2004. I just, I'm doing actually some grad school research lately, and it's centered around this project. I found out that this... I found out that this past school year, 2017, they just shipped their 100,000th portrait as part of this. So I wanted to bring this to you to share it, and I'm planning on next fall writing an innovation grant related to this to get more students involved with this opportunity for global outreach. So you're going to see a video here, if it's working, Bo. Okay, cool. About the latest project that we've done. We initially did Romania and Colombia, and this year we chose to participate with Syrian children, who you will learn more about in this video. So they're facing pretty extreme challenges. Sometimes it's a third world country, some other times it's more orphan, orphans and refugee-based. This year happens to be more refugee-based. These are our student volunteers from our Vernon Hills High School art department. Tonight I have with us Lee Juddila. Lee has been in our program for three years now, an active member of Art Club. I have Drew Laser right behind me. Drew has been part of the art program for three years as well. They are both juniors. And Zara Nadim, who is a senior this year at DH, who has been part of the program for four years now. So I've got some wonderful students, and I'd like to share the video, have them speak a little bit about their experience, and then share a little bit more about the project.
Text on screen: The Memory Project to the students of Ms. Malloy, Vernon Hills High Text on screen: We sent you photos of Syrian children in refugee camps, kids who hope for a peaceful future. You wanted to show support and encouragement, so you made special portraits just for them. Photos of the high school students with their portraits of the Syrian children. Collage of the portraits of the Syrian children. Text on screen: You hope your art would spread joy, and here is what happened. Scenes from a Syrian refugee camp. Text on screen: Your portraits traveled to the Syrian border with those from thousands of young artists from around the world. They reached the refugee camps, and then the schools, and then finally, the children. Images of the children in the camps. Children jumping in a circle. Happy children in a classroom receiving their portraits. Several exited students run to the front of the room to receive their portraits one Several exited students run to the front of the room to receive their portraits one Text on screen: Then they opened the portraits. In the background, more images of happy children. Children clapping and celebrating their portraits. The children showing off their portraits. The children hold their portraits up high over their head. Children speaking. The translation is in text on the screen. We love these portraits. Thank you for making them and for thinking of us so far away. This made us very happy. Now we are friends. My mother loved this color. They are so beautiful. You drew us so nicely. I hope to be an artist too, a teacher from the camp.
I just want to start with a big thank you for everyone who took part in this project. What you have done for these children is very special. For these children, there are a lot of donations, financial donations that comes for the facilities and everything else. They're very important, but they lack the special touch that you guys have provided in this project. What you have done, you have shown these children that there are people on the other side of the world that really cares, and that will change their future. What I've seen yesterday is that the love that you sent for them have lit up their heart, and I saw that on their faces. So really, thank you for everything that you have done.
These Syrian refugees have suffered a lot, and for them to see their photos and their portraits in such a way, it just puts a smile on their face. Thank you very much.
A woman is on screen speaking subtitles on the screen translate. She says, "The pictures that were distributed today were a joy for our kids, and it's put a huge smile on their face." Video of her speaking is intercut with images of the children in classrooms enjoying the portraits. The translation continues. "The idea of it is very nice, as there is another person somewhere in the world thinking about our children and the difficulties they face." The translation continues as images of the children play on the screen. "We thank everyone for brining these smiles to our children." An older man is speaking on screen. The translation is in text on the screen. He says, "We thank everyone who is supporting these efforts to help take the minds of our children away from war and bombing into a more peaceful environment of love and humanity. We thank you. You are our friends. Thank you so much." Images of the students giving thumbs ups and peace signs. Text on screen: "We finish with a poem by Aminé, a 13-year-old Syrian girl." The poem appears in text on the screen over him. "We're so grateful for everything you've done, and we hope you'll join us again." After applause, Allison Malloy returns to the podium.
Okay, so I think I'm going to have these students speak before I go into this a little bit, to share a little bit about why they chose to participate in this.
A female student steps to the podium.
So the reason why I chose to participate in this is because the year before, so last year, through our MSA Muslim Student Association, our service project was to raise money for Aleppo, Syria. And then this year, Malloy posted in Google Classroom, "Oh, you have the opportunity to create a portrait for a child in Syria." And I was like, "Oh, my God, like, are you serious? This is amazing." And it just really hits so close to home because you read about the things that these kids are going through and the suffering and the pain that's out in the world, and you have this chance to make an impact on such small kids too. So it makes me emotional.
The student receives a hug from Allison Malloy.
It's like, oh, my God, I'm sorry. I didn't even expect this to happen. But it's the fact that you're able to touch a kid's heart, even through the smallest thing, through art, and like, even my family, like, we're from Pakistan, and my dad's side of the family lives over there, and I know how much it means to other kids in other countries for them to be touched through art, because they don't have many resources and they don't have what we're blessed with over here and the things that we take for granted, and the fact that we're able to touch them through their hearts and like, let them know that, that people on the other side of the world are there for them, it's such a big thing to do, and it's like little moments and chances like these, I feel like we should always take opportunities, like, and make the most of them, even though it's like the smallest thing, it can mean so much to someone else. And it's, it's a really humbling experience as well that, you know, I'm sitting there and it's, it's, it's so wonderful just sitting there and creating such a beautiful portrait for another kid, and it just really, the experience was just so wonderful for me to sit down and take time for someone else, someone else who's in the world and who's experiencing so much. So that's why it hit really close to home for me.
Another student steps to the podium.
So I'm, so as I always said, she's from Pakistan, and my family is from the Philippines. The Philippines at the moment is really, has gone through so many typhoons in recent history, and then there's also the fact that they're facing a huge drug war on drugs that is threatening the lives of so many people, including children, and forcing them out of their homes. Just like in Syria, a lot of children there are facing so much struggle that they don't know how to cope with, and because of that, I feel like there's a need for us to go tell them that we know, we can help you, and we're here for you, and we sympathize for you. So for me, being able to draw something for these children in Syria isn't just a moment for me to enrich my life, to like improve my art, but it's also to improve the lives of a person that I don't even know, but I can feel like their struggle connect with me in some deep way. It's hard to describe it, but what's so important about art is that regardless of the language you speak, regardless of where you come from, art is a universal language that can be understood by anyone, in my opinion. And it doesn't matter, like, the life experiences that you have or like what you feel, I think art has that ability to communicate with you in no other way than like words can, you don't need grammar, you don't need syntax, you don't need to understand how this person's communicating, but if, as long as you can see the art, you feel it. And one of the most important things that, these portraits that we made for these children, the most important thing that they're saying is that we love them. No one else is able to give them those words like their parents, who have been driven away from their homes. By being able to say that to those kids who never offered that chance, I think it's incredibly special to be able to do something with that.
As that student gets a hug from Allison, another student steps to the podium. Mrs. Malloy tries to hold back tears.
It's so hard for me to, so initially, I was attracted to the project because Malloy was like, "We're drawing Colombian orphans." And I was like, "Oh, wow, I'm Colombian. I'm not an orphan, but I am Colombian." So, you know, part of that we haven't come. And so initially, I was attracted to that idea, and then I saw the kind of struggles that those kids were going through, you know? It wasn't always just an orphan, you know, bad circumstances, it gets even worse in some areas. We saw this year in Syria, these kids are not just worried about grades like I am, they're worried about bombs, and that's scary. And, but you see, these kids, what I like about kids is that they're very resilient. And, you know, I like to think of myself as resilient, you know? I got a lot of injuries this year, and so I'm not particularly healthy, and so there's not a lot I can do to help people, but I can do art. And one of these things that resilient kids like is that they can run around in art, and that's something they can do. You know, all these buildings were painted, and you could tell some of them were drawn by the kids, and I like that a lot, because if everyone knows, you've always, everyone, a lot of people here have had a kid, I'm assuming, you know, you work with a high school, so you at least know, know kids. And kids like art, and I'm a kid, and I like art, and it's something I'm good at and that I can do to help people. And so being able to say, not only the first year, I'm Colombian too, and I'm here and I care, and then being able to go to Syrian kids and say, "Here is a painting of you," and two of them this year, when I shouldn't have done, because I should have been doing other work, but somebody needed to draw that kid, you know? And I was like, "Well, I might as well do it. I don't have the time, but I'll do it because it's nice." And also, I didn't know what I was doing for my concentration, and I was very nervous about that, so I was avoiding that. And, you know, there's a good way to avoid that, and it's by doing a good deed. And so it was nice to be able to do something nice, because, you know, I have friends who are able to go and do for my children and do these all kinds of things, but I can't do that, and it sucks not being able to help people. I want to be able to do charity, but there's always so much I can do, because I can't stand for long periods of times, and I wish I could. So being able to give back in even a way that's just like, here's a pic picture of you that you'll probably lose in like a year, because I know I would, because I've lost my keys about 40 times in the past month, and my mom's not happy about that, but it's something that's important, and it's important to be able to do something even if it's something silly or cute or just art. And I know to some people it's just art, but to a lot of people like me, it's, that's my future, that's all I have, you know? I mean, my sister, like, she's in neuroscience, I'm not in neuroscience. I'm an art kid, you know? So I want to show these kids that there's always something for you. You don't have to be, you don't have to be completely surrounded by opportunity to be able to do things, you know?
Mrs. Allison Malloy returns to the podium.
This is very brave of them. We kind of talked about what they might say, but I, wow, that, thank you. That was incredible. So this has been happening for three years now, and like I said, they've sent out their over 100,000th portrait this year. And this year, there were 11 students who volunteered, 12 portraits actually painted and drawn. In the years past, it's been about the same, and like these guys said, art can impact so many people's lives beyond just a picture that we might put up in our own home. So I'm very happy that they could communicate so well about why this was special for them. Bo, if you could go to the next slide. So just, you know, the portraits that they made, the media is up for grabs, they can do whatever they'd like. The children do let them know how old they are and what their favorite color is, and besides that, their imagination can run wild. The kids do like to see themselves in it in some way, they want them to be fairly realistic. But I'm hoping next year that this becomes many, many more. I'd like to bring this into the curriculum in a more structured way, less perhaps on a volunteer basis, and more something that I can teach portraiture through at a variety of levels and abilities.
Slide D128, Daring Mission Statement.
This ties into what we recently, as a district, came upon agreement with, with the Daring Mission. I have kind of broken down on the next slide what I think this pertains most to in terms of our acronym, if you could go to that, Bo. Thanks. So I think it's the DAG. It's not really a great spelling there, but Dreamers and Doers. These guys obviously think that they can make a difference, and they did make a difference in these kids' lives. Doing something for the greater good, being... in these kids' lives. Doing something for the greater good beyond themselves and working for the community, in this case, the global community. And preparing for them, as Drew said, Drew plans to go into art as a career, at least thinking about it. And actually, Drew was blessed with some scholarships this summer for some study abroad opportunities outside of the state. So, you know, this is helping him to fulfill his dream, as well as bringing another child's dream true, and that someone else cares about them. The awareness that we do have a lot where we are, and that we don't take things for granted, Dr. Gilliam, that we think beyond ourselves, and we recognize that there's need in the world, and what can we do to change that and affect that. And then the idea of global kind of culture, that we value diversity at the school, but beyond this school, and that we can use this project to build relationships beyond ourselves. So, I think that's all I have to say. If there's any questions or anything. Like I said, in the fall, I plan to write an innovation grant so that we can hopefully get some more funding to have more students participate in this project.
Superintendent Dr. Prantis Lee. Board member Scott Luz.
Students, you described yourself as kids. You are probably more adult than some of the adults I know.
Oh, really? Thank you. These are probably three of the most generous people and giving people, and they are a really good representation, I think, of what we in the art department hope students to be that we send out from the school, so...
You know, Allison, I think this ties so well to Peter's piece before, where, you know, one act of kindness begets many. And I'll tell you, sitting here with goosebumps and tearing up myself as we're watching those kids in a very, very challenging environment in Syria, the happiness that was brought to their face in the midst of that is, it's overwhelming. So, you know, kudos to all of you, and thank you for your commitment to others.
Is this shared with the rest of the school?
Yes, I believe it was shared in the building minutes. And I, I've done this for three years with these guys. And I don't know why this year in particular, but there've been so many people coming up to them who have participated, and also me, and commenting on this. And I just think that's wonderful, that not only are people reading what's happening, the building minutes and everything, but that people recognize the value of it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right, thanks very much.
Have a good night.
You too.
You too.
Okay, next, the president's report. And I just want to make a few comments tonight on the matter that's been in the press recently. There was an ongoing matter in the Lake County Courts involving one of our former board members, Ellen Maurer, and our board secretary, Denise Witt. And today in federal court, I just want to comment for all the public that may be viewing the meeting tonight, all felony charges were dismissed. Ms. Maurer and Witt entered into a plea deal with a misdemeanor with supervision for disregard of election code. And in Illinois, a misdemeanor with supervision means that the sentence is not a conviction, but rather, the court enters a judgment and the case will continue for twelve months. At the end of a court-designated period, if a defendant has performed all the court has asked and not violated the law, the court upon petition can dismiss and expunge all of the charges, essentially meaning that those will disappear from their records. And also, based on our understanding of the detailed investigation that was conducted over the last two years, all the signers of the petitions in question verified and identified the candidate for whom they were signing, okay? In other words, they knew who they were signing the petition for, what office the candidate was running for, and they verified and identified their individual signatures on those petitions. In other words, all the signatures on all the petitions in question were valid signatures by District 128 residents. And as best we understand, those signatures were and are valid for election purposes. Furthermore, I really wanted to just make a few comments on both Dr. Ellen Maurer and Ms. Denise Witt. Ellen in particular was a tireless advocate for students and educators over her many years of board leadership and membership. She was an active member of the board for almost twelve years. She served as the board secretary and as chair of the program and personnel committee throughout her long board tenure. And in those roles, she had tremendous influence and impact on the unprecedented academic growth of our students, innovative teaching and learning, and teacher and administrator professional development. As a former teacher and working school administrator, Ellen brought an important educator perspective to the many iterations of the board that she served on. And she was consistently recognized for her outstanding board work by many District 128 constituents as they voted for and returned her to the board in four election cycles over a number of years. And Denise Witt serves three different superintendents and many different variations of school boards with distinction over her thirty-three-year career, including the past twenty-two years as executive assistant to the superintendent and school board recording secretary. She's been an exemplary public servant. And I know, in my entire time on this board, she's been absolutely critical to almost everything that we've been involved in. Her professionalism, her vast knowledge, her ability to maintain confidentiality as often required in her duties, her incredible organization skills, and her assistance to and support for the board and the superintendents she serves continues to be instrumental in the work that we've collectively done and continue to do to ensure that our students grow and succeed at higher levels. She's worked tirelessly to ensure that the board administration has what they need when they need it to conduct their business efficiently and effectively to benefit students and constituents. And she's led and organized numerous annual district efforts to assist and support others, such as the annual district office adopt the family program during the holiday season, in which money is raised and everyday family needs are provided to families in need during the holiday season. And also, she's instrumental in the planning and support of our two senior citizen holiday dinners, in which senior citizens are invited to our campuses for dinner and performances by our students. So, I'd like to just express my heartfelt support for Dr. Maurer and Ms. Witt, who've both been through a difficult and emotional period, a period that was much more difficult than it ever should have been surrounding, given the facts surrounding this case. Next, actually, I want to go back. Karen, I just want to make sure we officially nominate you as secretary of temp tonight. I neglected to do that in the beginning. Okay? Any other comments? All right, students, school board.
LHS Student School Board Representative Madison Kerber.
So, last Friday, LHS celebrated their Senior Decision Day. So, all the seniors got to take pictures in the foyer and pin their little flags on the college mat and celebrate all the years of work they've been putting in. So, it's really exciting for everyone to be together and celebrate our accomplishments. And then also, earlier, the week prior, athletes got to do their college signings, who will continue to play their score in college. So, again, just more accomplishments that are really exciting for everyone. On April fifteenth, LHS had their prom at the Crystal Gardens at Navy Pier. It was super amazing. It was super beautiful. And the weather was not great, but everyone still had a great time. Everything worked out. We still got to go on the Ferris wheel, which was a great surprise for student council. So, I would definitely recommend that venue again. It was really beautiful. Nate Schweitzer, Julian Vang, and Jake Rudolphy all earned recognition in their 2018 Scholastic Art and Writing Awards. Nate Schweitzer received a gold medal and an American Visionary Medal, which is the highest prestigious and selective award. So, we're very proud of like, all that he's accomplished. Schweitzer will work, will be sent to Carnegie Hall in New York, and his work will be on display at the national ceremony on June seventh, which is obviously a huge accomplishment to be displayed there. In physics classrooms, students got to chat with NASA scientists who are flying over Greenland. And this was just a super good experience because it's nice to have like, real-life applications of what you're studying. So, students really enjoyed that. And then Katie Stanky and then Suraj Rajan Dran represented LHS at the Y State competition at U of I. Suraj placed fifth in chemistry, and Katie also placed fifth in English.
LHS Student Representative Lilor Kedmore.
All right. So, Friday, April thirteenth, Zachary, Madison, and I had the amazing opportunity of spending a day at Vernon Hills High School. Chad Oen, Kelsey, Hiba, and Fran. And the day was a super educational experience, as we were able to learn how Libertyville and Vernon Hills were both similar in different schools. And one very interesting takeaway that I had was that Vernon Hills has this thing called VH Give. And so, it's like a day of, and we also learned about like, the Day of Service that Vernon Hills High School participated in earlier in the week when they all had the day of the SAT. And so, at our principal advisory board meeting last Friday, all six of the board reps were able to discuss our experiences at one another's school. And we also started talking about what it looked like for LHS to host their own service day. Next, The Laramie Project. So, this past weekend, LHS stage players put on a production of The Laramie Project. And the production had a strong emphasis on hate crimes, because it's about Matthew Shepard, who was a gay student, and he was brutally murdered. So, I actually watched it. It was like, amazing. And members of the theater department united around the idea that LHS has no, hate has no home at LHS. And a number of clubs, including Advocats, Best Buddies, they all had booths outside the auditorium after each production, again, just reinforcing the idea that hate has no home at LHS. And they gave information on the positive messages of their clubs at LHS. And this coming Friday, the conversation of Hate Has No Home Here will continue as club representatives and faculty members promote a hate-free environment. So, the name of this program is called Erase the Hate. And so, the theater department, in collaboration with other clubs at LHS, is hosting an Erase the Hate Night at LHS this Friday from three o'clock to four thirty. So, the purpose of this is again, to reinforce the idea that hate has no home at LHS. And so, each club will share their own unique message of how they erase hate in their community and around the world, as well as elaborate and help others can also get involved in erasing the hate in Libertyville. So, yeah, it was organized by the theater director, Mr. Thomas, and inspired by The Laramie Project.
VHHS Student School Board Representative Kelsey Carino.
All right. So, at Vernon Hills High School, this past weekend, we had our performance of Radiant Girls. So, the high schoolers used their talents to tell the story of the Radiant Girls, who were female factory workers that contracted radiation poisoning from painting watch dials, and how they were able to overcome their difficulties, and how their voices heard. They had three performances, and they went extremely well. On to athletics, our sports teams are in full swing and are getting ready for playoffs in the upcoming weeks. We are really looking forward to see how much and how far our teams will achieve and accomplish this season. Like Lola touched on earlier, we had a service day, and it was the day that the juniors were taking the SAT. And we had twelve different service opportunities. And we had four hundred students participate. We kind of told you guys last month how quickly we got people to sign up, which was amazing. Started off with a send-off in our auditorium, and Dr. G kind of talked about the importance of service and giving back to our community, kind of just to bring everyone together before we all departed from the school, and some of the different opportunities that students were able to participate in, or singing at the Springs of Vernon Hills, which was where I went, which was really fun. Some cleaned up the highway, and a lot of students went to feed my starving children. We asked a senior what they thought about the service day, kind of why she wanted to, you know, come give up her time instead of sleeping in. And she said, "She likes spending her time to make others happy." And she was more than willing to sacrifice a couple of hours of sleep to give back. So, it just goes to show how much students at our school want to give back to our community and have that and build that connection. The student activities director, Mrs. Beagle, said that next year, they will continue to build these connections in our community, to expand opportunities. So, this is something that we're really looking forward to do again next year. And again, our student activities director, Mrs. Beagle, was honored by the COB Alliance for her work with student activities to raise money for our sister school in Uganda, St. Jerome Cove. And we asked her what she was most proud of. And she said that the sustainability of the connection with the COB Alliance and being able to project future growth within the two schools was something that really is special to her. And she can confidently say that the school, St. Jerome, is embedded in Vernon Hills culture, which is something that's really amazing and special. Congratulations again to all FBLA national qualifiers. They got recognition at this meeting, which is really cool. The International Thespian Society, so participants in the all-state production of Big Fish, which happened back in January, were selected to actually go to Nebraska this summer to perform for the all-national, not a competition, but presentation. And so, Donnelly Black, Mackenzie Frelette, Skylar Torrey, Sophie Schmelzer, Valerie Smith, and Samantha Corrigan are all Vernon Hills High School students who will be heading to Omaha this summer. Jordan Bunning was presented with All-State Academic Award alongside two other Libertyville athletes, which she recognized at the past meeting. And then, students who were recognized for the April Cougar Class Act Award winners, they were Russlyn, Chamdulov, Jasmine Santiago, Doria, Emily Nanova, Zara Nidim, Starla Lawrence, Bate O'Neill, Jack Acosta, Hannah Ray, Arielle Pana, Philip Glenn, Allison Landis, Fernando Bravo Garcia, Joey Levitan, and Jocelyn Aguirre.
Student Representative Francis Farolo.
Okay, so then this weekend, Saturday, April twenty-eighth, is Vernon Hills Prom. So, that will take place at the Renaissance Hotel in Schaumburg. And this year, our theme is Gatsby. And then, what's fun this week is we have like, a senior week going into prom, so that seniors can sign a pledge today and tomorrow, and then they'll get a free lunch from the food trucks on Thursday. And like, the presentations, I would just want to recognize the amazing work of the Syrian Refugee Memory Project. And a few words, the students were just, that were part of this, thought it was a really valuable experience to give back, using their talents in art on an issue that, to us, would seem like a world away. And then, the History Fair, we had eleven students advance to Illinois History Day, which is the state-level competition for the History Fair, in all three categories, which are exhibits, research paper, and websites.
Congratulations to Kelsey Carino and Jonathan Wallach for receiving the Illinois Principal Association Award at the principal breakfast last week. And then, this past Friday, we went to Libertyville High School and chatted on our three LHS board reps to identify, like you said, the differences and similarities between a regular school day at Vernon Hills versus Libertyville. And as Vernon Hills students, we thought it was really interesting to be among their student body and see how their school culture differs from ours. And we were lucky to go on their decision day, so I was super excited to see where everyone is going. And for me, I even like, met people that are going to the Perspective Council where I'm going next year.
Yeah. And to add a little bit more, it was really cool to see how we had very similar strengths and also strengths in different areas for both of the schools. And we just want to say thanks to our pals at Libertyville for showing us around and giving us a taste of what it's like to be Wildcat.
Board President Pat Groody.
I only have one question. Will the spring sports people ever get a warm day?
I sure hope so.
Today was probably the best one.
Today was the first time we're outside.
Weekend wasn't that bad, no. Weekend was all right, wasn't it? And can you guys believe, almost this time next month, you're gonna be all done? All right, let's move on to superintendent's report.
Okay, thank you, Pat. Some more good news regarding our students and staff. The following students were named in March, LHS Students of the Month. Katie Walbogo, Cassandra Palomo, Hank Kulterman, Sadie Iyer, Rachel Benner, Ryan Berger, Trinity Hudson, Cardell Dawson, Alexander Herring, and Lena L. Coonan. Following, VHHS students were named April Cougar Class Act Award recipients. Russian Kamdulov, Yasmin Santiago, Dara M. Zelenova, Zara Nidim, Starla Lawrence, Bate O'Neill, Jack Acosta, Hannah Ray, Arav Panda, Philip Glenn, Allison Landis, Fernando Bravo Garcia, Joey Levitan, and Jocelyn Aguirre. The following D-128 students submitted images that were chosen to be exhibited in the Seventh Annual Jurit Exhibition, held May third through twenty-seven at Perspective Gallery in Evanston. Anna Bilo Moina, Sarah Bogan, Rachel Bod, Emmett Burke, Megan Carney, Zachary Furman, Anna Giardina, Grant Herbeck, Hannah Miller, Kate Miller, Jake Rudolphy, Caitlin Spear, Emma Ward, Nikita Code, Nelly Constantinova, and Kami Lieberman. Over two-hundred-and-twenty students submitted work totaling seven hundred images. The LHS robotics teams of George Legan, Daniel Kaputov, Max Chan, and Katie Olson took first place in the autonomous robotics competition, and third place in the interview design journal component at a competition held Saturday, Sunday, April eighth, at the Museum of Science and Industry. The team is coached by Sheri The team is coached by Sherry Brooks. The 2018 North Suburban Conference Art Show was held at Waukegan High School on April 9th. LHS students received the following honors. Festive show, Emma Gleason in pastel, Jake Rodolphy in photography, Grace Harold in computer graphics, Suzette Garcia Stam in ceramics, Mary Wetterling in watercolor, Nate Schweitzer in computer design, Clarissa Austin in oil, Jack Nicholson in printmaking, Anna Lee in mixed media drawing, Alyssa Leroy in jewelry, and Sophia LaFredo in 3D. Bridget Wilson received an Artist's Choice Award for her etching with Aquitent. Her metal plate etching, which is rare in high school art room, high school art classrooms, was chosen as an outstanding and unique piece from all the works, 500, 450-plus works in the show. The LHS Model UN students recently participated in the Northwestern University Model UN Conference in Evanston. Sophomore Izzy Greenberg received an honorable mention for her role as the Minister of Finance in the Somali cabinet. Sophomores Kat Corlos and Jessica Lee received the award for Best Position Paper as Canada in the United States Human Rights Council. The team's advisors are Lauren Potest and Matt Wall. LHS students Raj Rajendran and Katie Stanky earned medals at the state finals of the Illinois Academic Challenge held at the University of Illinois on April 17th. In a field of hundreds of state finalists, Raj earned a fifth-place medal in chemistry and Katie earned a fifth-place medal in English. LHS seniors Maggie Schutz and Melissa Manich were named among the top five award recipients in the 2017-18 Celebrating High School Innovators Competition, held April 7th and 8th at Illinois State University. The two were honored for their entry in the STEM, Science, Technology, Engineering, and Math Innovation category, which was a portable, user-friendly handheld product that detects and analyzes lactose in food for those with lactose intolerance. VHHS junior Alice Zheng earned a perfect score on the February ACT. Let me say that again, earned a perfect 36 score on the February ACT. An article by VHHS art teacher, Allison Malloy, who you met earlier this evening, was published in the Illinois Art Education Association publication, Mosaic. Her article is titled, "Think Like an Artist: Preparing 21st Century Students for Post-Secondary Success." So once again, lots of good things going on in the district among our students and staff, and we're very proud of all of you. On National Superintendent's Report, the board will note that they had in their practice tonight the 2018 committee and board meeting schedule, and our recommendation is that you approve that tonight, so we would be looking for a motion.
Board Member Scott Luz.
I move to approve the schedule as proposed. Second.
Vice President Batson seconds.
Roll call please. Batson.
Aye.
Groody.
Aye.
Luz.
Aye.
Lundstedt.
Aye.
Thurman.
Aye.
Motion carries. What's that? Not on any given motion though.
Okay.
All right, next on the superintendent's report tonight is District 128 school start time for next year, as we've been reporting for the last several months. We want to continue to update the community on where we're at in that conversation, as I did in EPOP prints in the last, EPOP prints two weeks ago and at the last board meeting. We'll just repeat again that we had an integrated group of stakeholders, which included students and staff and parents and administrators in the district who've met, did research on school start times and student sleep patterns and a number of things. Coming out of that work, the group made two recommendations for time schedules to consider to administration. We considered those recommendations. We made a recommendation to the board. The board approved that recommendation. So there are several components of that recommendation that are subject to collective bargaining. And as the public may be aware, we are in the process of collectively bargaining the contract for next year and beyond at this time. So we have nothing new to report, except the overall bargaining is continuing at this point, and that is a piece of the overall contract. So, we, anything to add to that? Okay? All right? Good.
That's the work of the task force.
Okay, so that's where it stands right now. And if there's any change to that, of course, we will report that to our stakeholders post haste. LHS Pool Project Update. Mark, you just want to give us a quick update now that the weather is turning and things should start to get even more exciting here in the next couple of months, so.
Yes, thankfully, we've seen some good weather. A little bit of snow here and there, but not a lot to impact moving along with the project. The bottom of the pool is fully poured. The deep end walls are poured. They're presently forming the shallow end walls and working along with that, they're installing any underground ventilation system that is going both on the north and south side of the pools. We're still working on foundation work. We have a few more piers to put in in between the school and the pool vessel itself. The vessel had to go in before these piers could be dug and then poured, so we're moving along. And this week, we plan to take down the old administration building.
Okay. And what day are you gonna do that? In case anybody wants to go over and watch, or retrieve some bricks. Scotty wants a brick for that, so.
Do you think people made of bricks?
As of this afternoon, they will start the process to set up and get the site ready, and demolition will start on Wednesday morning.
And Mark, once they do, just a follow-up, I know you and I have talked about this again, but just for members of the community. So once the building is taken down, it has a basement, so what, what happens? Because people always ask, are you gonna use that as the, you know, the warm-up pool for the big pool, basement, fill it with water? So can you just talk about what that looks like?
Yes, the basement foundation, the floor slab and the wall slabs will all be removed because this area will be where the new road is going in for the school, so it will be filled with stone and compacted and lifts, so there'll be no settling in the future after the main road is put in over, over this area.
Great, Ian, you want to add something?
And just on the financial side, so far through March, we spent 3.5 million of the 21 and a half billion, and we're on budget and on schedule for spring of 2019.
Great, thank you. Next on the superintendent's report tonight, our FOIA requests this month, we had four FOIA requests. And as has been our custom, we will read these into the record tonight. We received a request on 3/22/18 from Nathan Mahalich from the Illinois Retired Teachers Association, requesting names and email addresses of all teachers or administrators who are retiring in 2018. Brian Kelly did the follow-up. Our response deadline was 3/29 and we responded on 3/27/18. On April 5th, 2018, we received a request from Michelle Meckam-Benny-Liley, who's a staff attorney at the Schreiber Center, Community Justice Division, at 67 East Madison, Suite 2000 in Chicago, and requesting how many school resource officers are employed in your district. Provide a memorandum of understanding or agreement if you have a police department that provides you with a resource officer. Bryant Kelly followed up with that. Response deadline was 4/12/18. We responded on 4/10/18. On April 10th, 2018, we received a request from Katie Kim, who's an NBC Channel 5 reporter in Chicago, requesting documents sufficient to show which schools in community high school District 128 have a school resource officer and documents showing all policies and guidelines for that, SRO. Again, Bryant Kelly did the follow-up. Our response deadline was 4/17/18. We responded on 4/13/18. And finally, this evening, we received a request on April 17, 2018, from Steven Chakely, who's a data acquisition specialist with Smart Procure. He requested any and all purchasing records from 1/16/2018 to current, including PO number, purchase date, line item details, line item quantity, line item price, vendor ID number, name, address, contact person, and their email address. Rose DeSeco in the district office did the follow-up, and our deadline is 5/16/18, and we are working on that request at this time. And finally, on the superintendent's report this night, tonight, we'd like to acknowledge a donation. This donation was for Mr. David Schimmler, who lives in Libertyville. We want to acknowledge his generous donation of the following items to Libertyville High School for use by students involved with the LHS Photography Club. One Canon number 7D, one Canon number 1D Mark III, one Canon 100-400 millimeter lens, memory cards, batteries, and chargers. So we want to thank again Mr. Schimmler for that awesome donation for students in the Photography Club. And back to Groody, that concludes the superintendent's report.
All right, thanks very much. Next, the consent vote agenda. Again, I just want to highlight, Kevin, thanks for joining us, but consent vote agenda, item 3J2A, modified for Alex Jo Matnitz full-time. It says LHS, that should be VHHS.
And Ken, Pat, just let me point out, for community members that may not know this, but teachers and staff are not employed specifically by a building, so they're all 128 employees. Anybody who works in the district is a District 128 employee, but we just wanted to make that known in terms of assignment for next year, so thank you.
All right, so can I ask for a motion to approve the consent vote agenda?
Motion to approve the consent vote agenda. Second. Any discussion? Roll call please.
Groody.
Aye.
Huber.
Aye.
Lundstedt.
Aye.
Luz.
Aye.
Thurman.
Aye.
Batson.
Aye. Motion carries. Program and Personnel Committee, Board Member Luz will cover, I believe.
All right, so. Aquatics program here, and we worked with Steve Mitchell, who's worked with us on a number of occasions and been part of our pool committee here to really put Katz Aquatics back together about 10 years ago. And that agreement has worked famously for us and has really been effective and I think is a model partnership. So yes, we are recommending renewal of our agreement with Katz Aquatics, so we would be looking for a motion.
So. Second.
Any discussion? Roll call?
Huber.
Aye.
Luz.
Aye.
Lundstedt.
Aye.
Thurman.
Aye.
Batson.
Aye.
Groody.
Aye.
All right, motion carries.
We have board policy first reading, policy 6310. Brian?
Yeah, so policy 6310 is for, oh, sorry.
Associate Superintendent Brian Kelly.
Policy 6310 is high school credit for non-district experiences, course substitution for reentering students. And this policy in footnotes will be updated in response to Public Act 100-465. This will now include language to include physical education exemptions for students of grade 10 that are participating in extracurricular athletic programs.
Okay, okay. Now we have second reading and adoption that we will take action on these. Should I go through and read each one, remember? Policy 2260, Uniform Grievous Procedure. Policy 440, Incurring Debt, Operational Services. Policy 520, Workplace Harassment Prohibited. Policy 520-E, Resolution to Prohibit Sexual Harassment. And Policy 5170, Copyright.
Right, anything else? Anything to add on those? Any questions?
No changes since the last time.
No changes since we read them during our committee meetings.
Correct, right.
So we need a motion to adopt those policies as they are listed.
I move to adopt the five policies as listed.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call please.
Luz.
Aye.
Lundstedt.
Aye.
Thurman.
Aye.
Batson.
Aye.
Groody.
Aye.
Huber.
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right. The next is employment of employees. And do we go through each of these, or?
No, we can do those as a group, since we reviewed those in committee.
So we're taking action on, on the employment of these employees. And so we need a motion to move forward with this.
Brian Kelly.
These were after, these were after P&amp;P.
Which ones were? All of them?
All of these are new ones, yes. These were after P&amp;P committee.
Okay.
Do we go through them?
These are what we call lockets. Yeah, why don't you just go.
So first, we have our department supervisor appointments for next year with our co-supervisors in special services. We're recommending Alyssa Henning for Libertyville High School and Lizzy Wilson for Vernon Hills High School. For number two, our certified staff new hires, Yan Choi for science, full-time teacher at Vernon Hills, part-time Irene Han for science at Vernon Hills. Certified staff replacement hires from a retirement, this would be Sarah Zaher for science. Certified staff transfer, Melissa Korski is currently an English teacher and with Jordan McCall's retiring from school librarian. They're recommending that Melissa Korski become the next school librarian. And for ESP staff resignation, Dawn has resigned as department secretary at Vernon Hills, effective 5/4/18. And then for coaching extracurricular, staff replacement, Sherry Cody to become the next athletics ticket manager at Libertyville High School.
So Scott, before we vote on this, just again, for the community, on both the P&amp;P and FNF, the board does the, all of the detailed work at committee meetings, and we make recommendations at the board meeting when necessary, highlight no pros and cons on policies or anything else that we're discussing. But in the personnel area, that's always fluid throughout the school year, and in order to get employees hired in a timely manner, after the committee meeting, interviews continue, and we make recommendations, so we can sign people and not lose good people to other districts. So this is very common in particularly high school districts throughout the year, and this is something that we do virtually every month. If employees have interviewed, we finish that process and we've made recommendations to them so we can move forward with employment. So that's just, again, some additional information that the board knows, but just to share with the community. So yes, we would be.
The other ones, we didn't do it now because we went through it, and that's why it was in the consent.
Correct, again. Scott, why don't you, why don't you repeat that again? That's important.
So again, the other names that were on the prior, in the consent agenda, were names and positions that we discussed during our committee meeting, hence they were voted as part of the consent agenda.
Correct, thank you. So we would be looking for a motion.
Board Member Kevin Ubers.
Yes, Kevin. Just to help refresh my memory, number two, certified staff new hires. So these are new, completely new positions, so like it's one full-time, one part-time. Yeah, I would read that. What's our expected new hires for the, I mean, new potential teachers for D-128 next year?
Overall, we were looking at 6.6.
6.6. So about 6, okay, great.
So about 3.9 in special education to meet those identified needs coming through IDEA. And the balance of that 6.6 would be new staff in the MEO increase at Vernon Hills over the last really two years and continuing to grow.
Right, okay, so again, we're gonna be looking six, almost seven new hires that we gotta try to find. Okay, thank you.
I got a question. The athletics ticket manager, that's part-time.
So that's a stipend position, and the previous person that held that resigned from the position.
Give me a 20-second summary on what their roles and responsibilities.
Sure, they're, so at both schools, they have a ticket manager that is in charge of, for football games, basketball games, wrestling, various other sporting events. Postseason, IHSA, they handle the ticket, duties of selling the tickets, running, who's ever helping them at that time, collecting all the money, counting the money, and submitting report to either the athletic director or the IHSA as needed.
Great. And I think as a former athletic director, Brian will tell you, probably one of the most invaluable people that he actually, and Brian McDonald at Vernon Hills as well, so pretty important position.
Yep, thank you.
Board Member Lundstedt.
So I'd like to make a motion to approve the act we discussed under employment on employees.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call please.
Thurman.
Aye.
Batson.
Aye.
Groody.
Aye.
Huber.
Aye.
Luz.
Aye.
Lundstedt.
Aye.
All right, motion carries. Any other?
Thank you.
No other? Okay. All right, facilities and finance chairperson, Batson, and I believe item B is, we're not gonna review the co-contract tonight.
We're not, okay. Thank you, Dr. Groody. We have a update on the LHS long-term additional parking plan. We have a update on the LHS long-term additional parking plan.
Director of Facilities Mark Kubman.
Yes, we met with the village staff last Thursday, April 19th, to discuss the process for submitting an amendment to the current site plan permit for the LHS Aquatic Center to add, to include additional parking on the LHS campus. Timeframe for development review process starts with our parking plan being submitted on May 11th for development review. Our plan would then be presented to the Appearance Review Commission on May 21st for any review and comments. From there, we would present our plan to the Village Plan Commission on June 25th. The next presentation would be before the Village Board Trustees on July 10th, with the final approval from the Village Board Trustees on July 24th.
Mark, can you review again how many parking spaces we're looking at?
We're looking at 69 parking, 69 additional parking spaces.
And that will be on the western side of the property?
Western side of the property.
Correct?
Okay, good.
And Bryant, we're going to be meeting with the neighbors here pretty quickly, correct?
Yeah, so we sent out a letter to our neighbors next door to the west property to discuss kind of some of our plans and look at options on, you know, making sure that we're being good neighbors, so we invited our neighbors. There was 14 neighbors that were invited to a meeting on Thursday to meet with Mark. I think Mary Tiderick and I are going to be, you know, just kind of going over that parking and some of the options we're looking at.
So, one of the questions that maybe some community members would be concerned with, including the neighbors that bought the property, is, you know, will they be looking at just a parking lot? And in reality, in working with the village, there will be a barrier between that parking and those properties, so that barrier may be, it may be landscaping, it may be a fence, but something that will cut the headlights off from going into the property. Do you want to say as well that some of the backside of that, the properties along there, over the course of the years, have accumulated some, for lack of a better term, some debris? Our plan is to clean up our part of the property on our side of the fence there, since we're developing that area, to move forward, and that will, that area will be really nice. I think the other thing to point out here is originally, and Mark, you correct me if I'm wrong, the parking was part of our original Phase 3, the additional parking, and the village actually asked us to work with them to move that up in our process, and so we want to be moving forward that and be able to go to the village in a timely manner. We're also going to request that the village work with us one more year on student parking as we're finishing the pool project, and we would be ready to go sometime after the pool's completed in the spring of 2019. So, Mark, with all that said, am I in the ballpark there?
Yes, you're correct.
That's a good answer, by the way.
No, just because I was there, to be clear, we presented to the village an original plan, which was like Phase 1 or 2, that was allotted for 40 spaces. There was also an agreement with the village that they would graciously allow us to park over at Butler and have parking there. The caveat, which wasn't, maybe that's the wrong word, but the request was that we needed to come back now for a proposal for additional parking as part of that process. And us going forward with the additional 69 spots is fulfilling the request of the village, and frankly, the needs of the school needs the additional parking. So, this has been part of the process that was dictated when we got the original approval a year ago, where they graciously also let us have Butler.
That is correct.
Is that correct?
Yes.
So, with the addition of the 69 spots, we will now be able to accommodate all seniors that want to park at the lot, or most of them?
Matt, let's take one half-step back there that I meant to mention earlier, and then we can look at total numbers. So, this is additional parking to the original parking that was going to be placed back there, and that was roughly how many spots?
Forty.
So, forty, okay, so this 69 would be on top of the 40, which would give us 140 additional spots that we expected, and the 69 on top of that, so now I ask you a question.
Not 40 additional.
The 40 were replaced.
Yeah, the 40 were replacing what we had there.
Plus 69.
69 are new spots.
69 up from before.
Those are, 69, let me state this, 69 are additional spots that were never on that property before.
Correct. I just wanted to make sure that people understand that the spots that were there before are going to be replaced, and this is an addition, okay? So, now I ask you a question, I'm starting to interrupt you.
Go ahead. As part of those spots, there is, for so many spots that we have, we have to add handicap spots. Off the top of my head, I believe, the total we'll have over in that area will be seven handicap spots.
All right, but again, we anticipate having enough space for, I believe, with seniors.
Seniors, two parts here.
We anticipate to have enough, for what, for what we go for today, for, when we applied last year, we should have enough spaces to accommodate seniors.
For all seniors, for all seniors.
And then, what are the plans with Brainerd?
Then Brainerd would go back to first come, first served for juniors.
Okay, thank you.
And I do want to say that Tom and his staff have been working with students and staff over there and the police again to look at parking over there for next year, just in terms of processes and those type of things. So, Tom, there's probably going to be more information coming out about that as we get closer to the LHS staff meeting with the seniors and going through the parking process for next year. They'll take some of that feedback and what they've learned, and they'll add that to the mix for next year. So, we'll be getting more information on that. There, okay.
Good, thank you. The second item was going to table?
Yeah, our attorney just needs a little bit more time to just review that contract, so.
Motion to convene an executive session, again, three topics tonight, employment of an employee, five ILCs 120/2C1, two collective negotiating matters, five ILCs 120/2C2, and three, selection of a person to fill a vacancy on the school board, five ILCs 120/2C3.
Board Member Mac Thurman.
Motion to enter executive session for the reasons listed.
Second.
All right, any special? All right, roll call, please.
Batson.
Aye.
Rudy.
Aye.
Huber.
Aye.
Luz.
Aye.
Lundstedt.
Aye.
Thurman.
Aye.
Batson.
Aye.
Rudy.
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Is there a motion over there?
Summoned.
Second.
Taking all favor.
Aye.
Thanks, goodnight, everybody.
Okay, I'll see you guys.